Twenty twenty-two.
To lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Clark, can I please get a roll call?
Commissioner Korea?
Here.
Commissioner DeBries?
Here.
Commissioner Maderos?
Here.
Commissioner Newkirk Smith?
Here.
Chair Aranda?
Here.
All right, I'm gonna be opening up for general public comments. At this time, on, uh, public comments on the, on items that are not on the agenda or under the cities or under the city's matter jurisdiction, the planning commissioners will not be engaging. If you have anything that requires follow-up, staff will get back to you. Public comments generally are limited to three minutes per speaker. The chair may further limit time for public comments depending on the agenda schedule. If you're attending in person or wish to make a public comment, please fill out the speaker card and state your name for the record. I would like to now open up the floor for, uh, public comments. Is there anyone here in chambers?
Yes, we do.
Hi, welcome. Thank you. Uh, Brian is doing up that mic some? Uh, I'm getting, uh, text messages or notices that people can't hear us out in Zoom land. All right. All right. Thank you. Um, anyone else here in chambers that would like to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll, we'll move over to Zoom land. Anyone on Zoom that would like to make a public comment? Go ahead, Vada.
Hi, again, I was simply gonna say that we couldn't hear what the speaker said. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, do you wanna go up there and just say something real quick to see if they can hear? Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear.
Thank you for bringing that up to us. Anyone else on Zoom that would like to make a public comment? All right. Now, we're gonna be moving on to agenda item number three informal project review.
By the way, for the benefit of people here, uh, in Zoom land and elsewhere, the comment was just simply, uh, that, uh, the property owner, uh, Cara Denny would like the city to reevaluate its, uh, weed abatement policies with respect to properties that are, um, you know, on the, uh, sort of outside town. Not outside town, but, you know, it, in more rural, yeah.
All right, so, uh, moving on to agenda item number three informal project review. Um, sorry, uh, Brian, is there any, anything for us?
No, we don't have any items.
All right. Moving on to, um, agenda item number four consent. Um, uh, is there any commissioners that would like to pull an item for a separate vote or separate discussion? Or would any member of the public like to pull an item for, um, former affidavit of posting agenda? What, but why, how come there are no minutes, by the way? Oh. Yeah, yeah, that happens. Okay, so we have just the affidavit. Just the affidavit. So then, um, is there a motion? Or can I get a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the affidavit of the agenda.
And then, um, staff or, I mean, um, clerk, can I get a roll call?
Commissioner Korea?
Hi.
Commissioner DeBries?
Yes.
Commissioner Maderos?
Yes.
Commissioner Newkirk Smith?
Yes.
Chair Aranda?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And then, um, agenda number five informational and discussion items. Um, item number B, city manager's report on the strategic plan City Gate. The staff?
Uh, thank you, Chair, members of the planning commission. I wanted to take an opportunity, uh, tonight to introduce or reintroduce, um, the city's efforts to, uh, prepare a strategic plan. Um, in November, with the election pending and possibly, uh, three new council members, uh, coming on board. At least, uh, for the city manager, he was looking at a brand new city council and thought it would be a good opportunity to step back and as we did in 2020, bring in a consulting team of retired, uh, public administrators called City Gate. And in 2020, they led us through a strategic plan, which we modified over the years. It lasted about three years. And, uh, I think now with all the changes COVID and other things, uh, happening, uh, it's, it's time to reassess and reevaluate. And so, um, so in that, uh, to show you, uh, City Gate, um, has been doing this for three decades. Uh, they also are part of their virtual city hall that they're working with. Um, they've had hundreds of strategic planning projects, fifty-plus experienced retired local government consultants. And we worked with, uh, a local government specialist Stacy Bristow. Uh, Andy Green came back to assess our financial conditions and situation. And Gary Elliott, this time, provided a focused review of our public safety programs. And, uh, this is ongoing. Uh, we met, uh, March, uh, A- April fourteenth and fifteenth, uh, Friday all day and then Saturday in the morning. So we, uh, we talked about, uh, what strategic planning was. And, and Stacy Bristow brought by, brought back, uh, the results of several interviews she had with, uh, council members and stakeholders, as well as, uh, as well as their goals, uh, for reviewing the public safety and the fiscal overview. And then, uh, we talked about core values. We developed a vision and mission statement that's posted on our website in draft form. Um, we had a, a, a working lunch, more or less. And then we talked about strategic goals and actually put together, uh, some, some, uh, submission statement and, and strategic goals, and I'll share those with you here in a minute. Um, uh, we had, uh, oh, this is the wrong survey. Um, this is the wrong slide deck. Um, we had, uh, a good return on the, uh, surveys that we issued to the city. At the time of the meeting, we had eighty-one responses. We now have a hundred and thirty-eight responses. It's interesting to know how many neutral responses we had. Um, and just real quick, um, it's interesting also to see, um, a, a number of our residents have lived here less than ten years. Um, most of them are, uh, own their houses, they don't rent. Um, a, a few of them, uh, twenty percent, uh, uh, own businesses or work for the city. And I'm gonna stop this here, 'cause this is a much longer slideshow and you don't need to see it. Um, let's see. Okay, I, maybe I didn't open the right one. No, I had a slideshow prepared last, a week ago for this meeting. I don't see it here, guys. Sorry, that was the wrong slide deck. It starts with the same slide. I'm sorry, this'll use, this, um, really, this is very faster. Um, um, yeah, we haven't had, it's only about eight slides, I'm sorry. It's the ninth. City Gate update meeting? Yeah, PC edition, okay, this should be it. All right. This is still not it. Um, okay, um, next set idea, um. I'm just gonna read off the slides that you have copies of them. Um, so, um, I, I was reviewing, uh, for you, uh, the, the work that we did in March. And then we were planning to come back in June. And these were some of the takeaways. Uh, the number one, we did a, a word, uh, one of those word, uh, the most common used words during the whole session in water was the largest word on our, on our word cloud. Um, but development and activities were second. And economic development and revitalization were, were big words, um, parking as well. And these are all issues of interest to the planning commission. So I wanted to share those with you. Um, of the core values that we developed, uh, collaboration, honesty, resourcefulness, accountability, and integrity rose as core values of the group as we worked through the afternoon. The council priorities included fiscal stability, infrastructure, economic development, public safety and disaster preparation, uh, communication, the general plan, and parks and recreation. So, uh, the mission, I'll just read to you quickly and you can go online and see this. The city of San Juan Batista strives to provide exceptional service to the community by fostering a sustainable economy while preserving its uniqueness through collaboration, honesty, and resourcefulness. So that's our draft mission statement. And our draft vision statement is, is, uh, taken from the general plan and modified, uh, uh, during this March workshop. So in the general plan now, it sounds very similar. San Juan Batista is a vibrant, thriving community who strives to tell its complete history and cultural heritage while honoring the needs of its residents and businesses. San Juan offers the world a unique destination amidst boundless natural beauty, open space, and agricultural resources. So, um, those are the, the fruits of, of, uh, the effort, uh, in March. And we're planning on, uh, uh, another session. This time it'll be a brief session on a Friday afternoon on June second. And then an all-day session, uh, Saturday. And that brief section, uh, Friday afternoon is gonna focus on the strategic plan that's currently in the general plan. We tried to address this during our, uh, discussion in March, but it's just overwhelming. Um, it's eighteen pages long, seventy-five pages long. It has twenty-seven elements and two-hundred-and-sixty goals. And we started to go through those one at a time on this very long Friday afternoon. And we just abandoned ship and took a break and, and got a Pepsi and started. I have no idea. So I'm, I'm sharing this with you because it would be great if the commission could be there on June second in the afternoon, Friday afternoon. Um, and, uh, help us, uh, go through a consolidated version of these, uh, of these elements. A lot of them are very familiar. A lot of them we have already addressed or are addressing. Uh, things like complete streets that we've talked about, things like, um, um, uh, smart, smart growth and smart design. Um, there's just a, a number of things that, uh, that will sound very familiar, but I think, uh, it'd be great if the commission participated. But, no, David, I wanna give you credit, you were, you were there both days. So, so sorry, I didn't wanna, and you'll be there again. So on, on June second, we're gonna focus on the general plan, strategic plan, uh, confirming its relevance with the twenty sixteen priorities. And then on June third, uh, we're gonna review Friday's discussion. But we're gonna talk about innovation and communication training, uh, being civil with one another and, uh, and how to, uh, how to communicate for staff as well as, as members of the public and our elected officials. And then after lunch, we're gonna talk about how to implement our strategic plan. And then, uh, uh, City Gate will come back with a, uh, a, a report for, for the community to, to ponder. Um, the goal is, is get our priorities straight. And I, and I rounded off some of those and to get them in line with our budget. 'Cause our budget is gonna be presented to the, uh, city council in a week from tonight, um, in a draft format, and then we'll be scheduling budget hearings. And so as David, as Brian alluded to, um, uh, the, uh, for example, funding historic preservation is something that we need to talk about. And we need to get concrete about so that we can make sure it's funded and it's in there. So that the, the policies match the funding, that's, that was my goal. So, um, with that, um, sorry, the slides didn't work out, but probably got a quicker presentation anyway. So, well, I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, thank you for, for your time.
Commissioners, does anybody have a question? I, I have a question. I think this goes to staff, um, primarily Liz. Um, Liz, I'm, I'm assuming this is on our calendars, correct? I, I think I saw something, so, all right, good. And then, uh, another comment from me would be to our commissioners. If we can, let's show up for this meeting. Um, that's all I have. The Friday, January second, um, for the afternoon, if possible. Got it, no worries, if we can, please. Let's, let's.
If you go there in January, you'll be late.
I mean, June, I am so sorry. June second, Friday, the afternoon. If we can, whoever can, thank you. Thank you. All right. Um, going to be moving on to city manager's report on this, wait, no, I'm sorry, I think we just did that. Does that be? Yeah, that was B. Sorry, I just had a order. That's okay. Yeah, all right, so I guess we're gonna be moving on to this city attorney roles and responsibilities of the planning commissioner, uh, commit, planning commission members in providing information and assistance to the public regarding finding matters and topics of concern.
Good evening, Chair. Go ahead, Brian.
Uh, if I can just start off, uh, Bob, if you don't mind.
Sure, go, go, no.
Hopefully, while I, hopefully, while I give a little spiel, uh, you can find a copy of the memo, uh, to share, is that possible?
Hmm, I don't know if I can share my screen or not.
You can, you're co-host.
I, I, I'm not speaking, I'm not speaking about my capabilities, I'm speaking about my talent in order to do that.
Oh, I see, okay, well, if you.
Let me, let me, let me see if I can do it, hold on.
Yeah.
See, I know, I'm not, I'm, Brian, I'm not gonna be able to do that because I have to access Zoom through a different computer, uh, identity than, uh, I use for, uh, other purposes. So I, I'm actually on my laptop now rather than on the office system. And the office system is where the memo resides.
I see, okay.
Had I known ahead of time, I probably could've.
Well, I'm, I'm sure that we'll cover it, but let me just get started a little bit here. Um, the, the reason that we have this item on the agenda is because we have three new, brand-new planning commissioners. Couple of you went to the Planning Commissioners Academy, uh, which was very helpful, um, and, uh, understanding the role of the commissioners and how to be in the community, um, and, uh, be responsive to the community as well as, I, I don't know. Somebody needs to use. Yeah. So, so, so the idea here is to, um, uh, start, start, basically start from sort of a real foundational, you know, sort of concept here, which is, you know, that, um, the, the, uh, commissioners, commission itself exists in order to make decisions. And in order to make decisions that are, are certain prerequisites. Um, and so it's, it's, uh, it's very important that the commission understand, um, in, um, in the context of the role that you were assigned by the city council and, uh, and, uh, the way that, um, the commission is formed with respect to your bylaws and how you're, why you exist in the first place with respect to government code itself, with respect to the California Environmental Quality Act, subdivision map act, that these are opportunities for people to make discretionary decisions. Maybe there's some feedback. Um, there's an opportunity here, but there's also some, um, safeguards, uh, that exist in the law, um, to be aware of. And a lot of these are, uh, safeguards that are tested through the works of Bobble Explain. Um, and some of them exist just, um, as a matter of, um, what do you wanna call it, common sense? Um, and so what we'd like to do is ensure that, uh, with you a lot of it, so that, um, uh, so that the, the entire commission is familiar with the guardrails that exist that protect your ability to make decisions. And so that's why we're here, because we have new commissioners. And we have people here, I don't know, you maybe need to hear this as well. They have a lot of experience in land use. Um, and a lot of experience on the commission, uh, as you do. Um, it's always important to be reminded a little bit, uh, of these guardrails. So with that, um, and would like, uh, task Bob to sort of summarize his perspective from a legal standpoint. Oh, hang on, Bob. We need to.
Uh, there we go. Okay, I could, can, can you hear me now, as they say?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, as Brian mentioned, uh, I did distribute a memo to everybody, uh, on the commission. And thank you, uh, Chair and Commissioners for the opportunity to, uh, be with you this evening, just to talk a little bit, not too long, uh, about the role and responsibilities, uh, uh, of the, uh, your role as commissioners, uh, and, uh, interfacing with the public folks. Uh, and I know you've heard from me and probably from others during the discussions on the Brown Act and the process that's required of a legislative body, uh, concerning issues such as notice of your meetings, uh, and transparency. And I, I, I know earlier this evening, there was the, the, uh, affidavit of posting of the agenda. And of course, that's, uh, uh, part of the Brown Act. And, uh, I'm not gonna dwell on the Brown Act tonight because, uh, I think you've heard, uh, probably all you need to hear about that at this point. But the topics that I would like to just talk about briefly are not entirely dissimilar, uh, because they involve, uh, transparency. And, uh, the planning commission, uh, as Brian mentioned earlier, was, you know, is created by formal action of the city council. And, uh, the city council being the, uh, legislative body of the, of the city, uh, in creating the planning commission, the planning commission is also a legislative body subject to the Brown Act and other requirements. Uh, but as such, uh, the planning commission must in all matters act in the public interest. Uh, and, uh, that's easy to say and, and not always easy to do, I think. Uh, 'cause I know that you, there's a lot of different, uh, opinions. A lot of people, uh, are gonna try to, uh, is address you and speak to you both in public meetings and outside of public meetings. And try to, uh, get your attention and, and have your, uh, uh, your views, uh, conform to their views. So you'll be acting as decision makers in several different contexts. Uh, and basically, those contexts are determined by the matters that are under your consideration. Uh, and the, there's essentially really just four types of matters. Uh, there are sometimes combinations of, of, of one or two of them, but essentially they're legislative, quasi-judicial, administrative, and ministerial. And, uh, each of the, uh, different types of matters that you'll have before you, uh, have different rules, slightly different rules and levels of discretion that you apply in each case. But as members of the planning commission, probably a great majority of the matters that you will be asked to decide are quasi-judicial. Uh, and in the quasi-judicial context, you're gonna be asked to apply the existing laws and regulations, not just the municipal code, but also, uh, in many cases, state law, probably in some cases, federal law. Uh, the other types of matters before you will be legislative. Uh, and in context of the planning commission, uh, your legislative decisions will primarily focus, uh, on the recommendations that you make to the city council. Uh, administrative matters, uh, will concern primarily the operation of the planning commission itself. Uh, you know, your own, uh, rules of governance, I'll say. And, uh, you will probably have a few ministerial matters which are a form of administrative matters wherein, uh, no discretion is really required. It's just, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll use the term a rubber stamp essentially of, uh, uh, something that you're required to do, to conform to an established rule. But the quasi-judicial matters is where we're gonna focus this evening. Uh, and they require the application of laws and rules. Uh, and there are significant due process concerns, uh, with quasi-judicial matters that exist really in all contexts, but, uh, they're more pronounced and more important in quasi-judicial matters. Uh, and due process uh, essentially is, uh, what we describe. Sometimes we refer to it as procedural due process, uh, which forbids certain actions. Uh, no matter how or under what color of authority they might be, uh, carried out. Uh, and probably, with the exception of criminal law, there's no area of the law that has a greater emphasis on due process than is land use. Uh, and, uh, and, and, and probably Dan will appreciate this particular quote because, uh, it has been said that due process, uh, is, uh, probably the greatest contribution ever made to modern civilization by lawyers. I can't take personal, uh, uh, credit for that, but, uh, it, it is a very important concept in the law. Uh, easy to say, sometimes not that easy to really understand. Uh, so during your time on the planning commission, you will undoubtedly be asked to hear and decide, uh, matters that are, are really controversial in town. Uh, and you'll have, uh,
We're gonna give Bob a few minutes to see if we can get him back on Zoom. If not, we'll move on to the next section.
And you, can you hear me? I hope so.
We, we stopped being able to hear you when you started talking about how the planning commission will
Right.
likely hear controversial matters.
I, I apologize. This is, I've never had problems getting disconnected by Zoom before. But this is the second meeting I've been on this week where my connection was lost. So I'll try to take advantage of the reestablishment of the connection here. So as I said, it's easy to speak objective. What's going on here?
One second, guys. I'm just going to make a comment out there.
Sure.
Recording was paused because we were having some issues with Bob Rathie on Zoom. He got disconnected. So we paused the recording during that time and our commissioners were, we were just chatting with staff during that downtime. Now, Bob, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Very well. Thank you. So fundamentally, the due process is, is the right to be heard and to have your matter decided by reasonably impartial and uninvolved decision maker. And that's all of you. So your, your role and responsibility is to remain reasonably impartial and primarily uninvolved in the matters that come before you. It is, in a legislative context, is perfectly acceptable and really expected, really, especially by the electeds, to express your opinions in or outside of a notice public meeting. So long as you're not violating the Brown Act in terms of a serial meeting. But in a quasi judicial context, it's not, it's not quite so simple. The statements that you make and opinions that you hold in a quasi judicial matter can rise to the level where your impartiality may be questioned. And on some occasions, whichever side loses on an important decision, the, the people who, who feel that they've lost, lost that decision will reflect on your statements and opinions made in or outside of a public meeting. And to try to determine whether there's evidence of, and these words are actually in quotes, and they should be, an unacceptable probability of actual bias. And of course, statements that are made inside and outside of a public meeting also include statements made on social media. So there's so many ways to communicate now, more than there were in the past, that it really is important that you remain cognizant of the statements that you're making on matters that are, or may become before the planning commission in a quasi judicial context. And the unacceptable probability of actual bias is really the current legal standard. And if it can be established by credible evidence that the decision was made by participation of someone who did have that, then the decision can be overturned in a judicial action. So it's, it's, it's important to remain cognizant of that fact. The law does recognize, and memo speaks to this, that you can't, that you do and, and will continue to hold opinions and strong views about certain issues. And as provided that your views are based on the merits and, and there's a case on that as well, as there is on the unacceptable probability of actual bias, that as long as it can be established that your views are based on the merits of the case, they're not necessarily disqualifying. But the line between those two legal concepts, unacceptable probability of actual bias and a decision based on the merits can sometimes be hazy. And if, if a court is required to decide it, they are going to, in my opinion, and according to the current legal theories of this, they're going to focus more on the probability of actual bias. So I think in concept, my advice here is if at all possible, it's, it's probably best not to become personally embroiled or involved in matters that are likely to come before you during your service on the planning commission in a quasi judicial context. And that includes use permits, variances, things of that nature. So, and, and the importance of, of not becoming embroiled in these matters outside of the, what takes place in, in the chambers is to preserve to the best degree you can, your impartiality. And, and you are going to hear from the project applicants and you're going to hear from opponents and proponents on these various projects, as well as just your fellow citizens, all of whom are going to be seeking to influence you, or many of whom will seek to influence you in one way or another. And also to learn your views. So the best course is ask them to try to influence you during the public hearings, which are required on these land use matters where everybody can hear and everybody can participate. But if you do have conversations outside of public meeting and, and you probably will, when the matter comes before you in a quasi judicial context, it's important that you recognize you do have an obligation to disclose on the record what these, and they're known as ex parte contacts, what the ex parte contacts, whom they were with, and, and, and very briefly, the substance of the context. And, and put them on the record. So in the event that you, that you found that, you know, you, you just couldn't be impartial, that you have an opinion on this and you're not going to be swayed by what you hear in the, in the chambers, then the solution in that event is just to simply recuse yourself from that matter. So staff will be available to assist you in all these things, as, as will I. And so just in summary, I would say that your role as planning commissioners will, in, in the majority of the matters you'll be asked to decide is to afford the applicants and the public to whom, to whom you really owe your, your duty to afford that, those people due process. And your responsibility in that context is to remain to the greatest degree that you can impartial. Information that you, that you receive and are given and provided should be to the greatest degree possible in a notice public meetings such as you're conducting tonight. So that's, that's really all I have to say. This presentation, the memo, pretty much follows, I think, just, just what I've described. So I'm going to stop talking here and ask if there's any questions or anything that you'd like to ask me to discuss further.
I'm going to open up to our commissioners first. Is there any comments? Questions?
Yeah, attorney, city attorney. Yeah, I have a question. I really appreciate you bringing this forward. I think it's really important for all of us to understand this. I know that I've been approached many times in the past with people from the public and what have you, phone calls, you name it. And my best answer is, you want to really talk to me? Come to the meetings? I'd be happy to talk to you there. As far as any decision making, so. But I appreciate that. And the other thing I wanted to, to ask you was, I appreciate that you're here with us today. Where else are you going to go with this? Is there any plans to do that? There are other new people that are working for the city, including the city council. Are you going to bring this forward to them too as well? Thank you.
The, the memo that I provided, which is a public document, by the way, you, you can feel free to provide it to anybody. That memo went to the city council as well.
Bob, again, thanks, thanks for presenting this. I just have one question, a very simple little thing. I know I, it would have been many years since I studied Latin and I know the lawyers have your secret language. In, in terms of this topic, what does ex parte mean?
Means on, on, on the part of one party, it, it's a contact. If, if there's two sides, it would be one party addressing the decision maker. In other words, outside of a meeting, if you were hearing only from one side or the other, only hearing from the applicant, it, it's, it's a one-sided conversation, I'll say.
If you had two parties addressing you about the same topic, but they were opposing views, would that be ex parte?
Outside of a public meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, each one would be essentially an ex parte contact. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? If not, I can go last or I can ask them. All right, I, I have a few questions. So one, one of them being, at what point do you recuse yourself if you had ex parte communication? Let's just say I've been helping a couple of our, you know, businesses go through the process of trying to apply for a permit or encourage them to apply or get their business license. I'm not essentially filling out the form. I'm not downloading any of that. But I am having communications where I'm saying, hey, you need to talk to city staff, or I'm being the moderator between the public and our, our staff. And so again, it's not where I'm getting deep in, in the weeds, but I'm, I'm just encouraging them to make a call or email this, this person. And, you know, you know, promising, you know, someone will reach out, things are going to get better. So, you know, obviously I don't mind saying, hey, I had ex parte communication, but at what point do you consider yourself where you have to recuse yourself? You can no longer help those, that individual or that business than to be out.
Good, good question. And I will preface by, my response by saying, this memo and my remarks tonight do not get into the Fair Political Practices Act and, you know, conflict of interest for financial matters and things of that nature. That's a much more complex subject than I would be prepared to discuss with you tonight. Essentially, Chair, the, the line is where you feel you can no longer be impartial. And it's, it's really, you're advising applicants and people to, to contact staff. That, that's the right thing to do. That's, it's staff's job to do that. So they should be, they should be coming through staff. You should be using staff to, I'll say, not to isolate, that's a little bit too strong a word because I, you know, I know that you're, you're all members of the community and you all want to do the best for, for the, the folks that are, that are out there, that are coming to you. But in these quasi judicial matters, legislative is a little bit different when you're making recommendations to the planning commission. That, that's a bit different. You're, you're a bit freer to express opinions and feelings in that context. But in quasi judicial, you really need to, to, you know, refer these matters to staff. Let staff deal with the applicants and, and the folks that are on either side of the issue. Does that help at all?
Kind of. And then, and then what, what if?
It's not always easy. It's, it's not always.
Yeah, I'm figuring that out.
I can't really tell, I can't really, I wish I could define a bright line and say, if you do this, you've crossed over. The only bright light is really your own assessment of your ability to be impartial. Bearing in mind that in, especially in controversial matters, people are going to be looking back, depending on which way the decision goes, at what you did. So you need to be really cognizant of that and say, how's this going to look? If I vote against this person, are they going to look at me and say, I was biased and are my actions here something that, that could constitute credible evidence of that bias? So it's, it's good to be aware of that.
Got it. Yeah. And then the other item, you know, another question would be, let's say I'm not getting anywhere with, with staff or we're having a hard time, you know, getting through or, or figuring that out. Where do I, where do I stop or where, what's that line where I can't help? Or essentially what it is, is anytime I'm, I'm trying to help out, it's for the public's interest. It's something that, you know, is vocal from our talent. We hear it here in chambers. And, you know, we're just having a small communications issue. And so again, I'm either CC it on these emails or people are coming to me looking for a solution. And again, I'm just, you know, tied in or I'm just saying, hey, we're just trying to fix this. So again, it is up to my discretion on where I feel, you know, I'm, I'm a little too in too deep or, or I'm being biased or is it, I, you know, I can't be doing that.
I would say the first, the first action would be to refer the, refer them to staff if they have, if they have, you know, they need information or they want to know how to have input into the process. And, you know, a lot of people I know are reluctant to, you know, it's easy to say, oh, come, come to the meeting and, and address the commission during public comment or, or when the item comes up on the, on the agenda. But a lot of people are, are reticent to do that. And I, and I understand that, that reason very well. So it's always appropriate for them to communicate by email. The art of writing a letter is, is sometimes becoming more and more of a lost art, but of course, that, that's available. And, and so people, people have other ways to, to have input. But the first, the first line of preserving your independence and your impartiality really lies with staff. They're, they're the first defense. And, and, and the city manager, I know, you know, is, is always available to, to address any, any issues you might be having in that context, I would hope.
You got it. Um, I think that's pretty much all I had.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions from our commissioners?
Hi, Bob. I had something I wanted to go over with you. And I don't mean to split hairs, hairs on, on any of this stuff. But by the way, I thought your memo was very, very well written.
Oh, thank you.
Very well done. But it's on this whole idea or a concept or topic of what I'll call the pitch. And that was with the county, for example, for 14 years. On the planning commission, county planning commission, I was pitched so many times by project applicants, project proponents, big projects too, like SolarGen out there in Pinot or San Juan Oaks. And you know what those pitches consist, consist of? The, the applicant giving you kind of a better understanding of their application, the ins and outs of it, why it's the best thing the county's ever seen. And then I also received or had the opportunity, of course, to meet with a lot of folks in opposition to a project, for example, that, that, like I said, Pinot, the SolarGen, those people would drive from Pinot out here to San Juan to my office just to meet with me to tell me all the reasons why that solar installment should not be put there. And I listened. And to be quite transparent with you, I learned more about a project during those meetings than I ever could during a meeting. And I, and I thought they were very valuable. I would, as you point out in the last sentence of that paragraph, disclose that, of course, hey, I met with the opposition group from Pinot on SolarGen or I met with the people from trying to install it or with the San Juan Oaks folks and so forth. But I think that as far as the pitch goes, it seems to be commonplace in planning and land use. And I think the benchmark, the keystone, as you point out, is if any of those pitches or opposition whether they made me impartial, they never did. And then, you know, you always learn that you got to go into every meeting with an open mind. Can you hear me now, Bob?
Sorry, Dan. I think I dropped off again. Must not have paid my Zoom dues this week, but I, I heard you talking about, the last thing I heard was the pitch.
The pitch, yeah, in favor or against?
Yeah.
An application, a project. And I, I think I was saying that I learned more in those types of informal settings. And, you know, things it would include even site visits. Site visits were great. You know, Supervisor Patello and I had a, a live one, a hot one with the Stevens Creek Quarry on Anzar Road. And we met individually, Supervisor Patello and I, with the Stevens Creek Quarry folks. And then we met with all the neighbors. And then we met with all the neighbors who were very much opposed or had concerns. And we learned a lot, and we heard a lot, and so I thought it was very valuable. Now, it never resulted in me feeling I was, um, had a unacceptable probability of an actual bias, that or even a little bit of a bias. I I always did my level best to make sure that I kept an open mind, I was gonna make my decision at the meeting. But I think some of these things leading up to a meeting, these pitches or these information gathering, site visits and so forth, can be valuable as long as everything is transparent, as you said, above board, disclosed at the meetings. Say, hey, I just wanted to point out that I met with the project applicant. Um, they gave me a call, they wanted me to see the site, I went and looked at it, et cetera, but, um, as long as it didn't make me form a bias one way or the other, and I could, in all good consciousness, go into that meeting and vote one way or the other, I found it to be helpful. So, I wanted to just check in with you to s- confirm, I hope, that my way of looking at things is is good, as long as everything is disclosed and transparent, as you said.
Yeah, I I I would say certainly the things that you described, for the reasons you described them, can be valuable. But I think in a quasi judicial setting, it's it's dangerous, it's dangerous. Uh, when you say you were never swayed, or you were never, uh, uh, persuaded by any of the applicants, they must have done a pretty poor job. Because they were certainly, their purpose was certainly to sway you and to, uh, you know, form your opinion outside, uh, of a meeting. Uh, as long as they're disclosed, uh, they're not illegal. Uh, but I think most attorneys would probably, you know, most attorneys, I'll say, in my position, not necessarily an attorney for an applicant, would would say, uh, we would prefer not that 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 tho- tho- those types of contacts be be kept to a minimum. Site visits and things also can be done, uh, you know, on big projects, uh, by the entire commission, you know? You almost said, yeah, well, you know, you know, just as well, not better than I do, you know? This, this is the kind of thing that, you you know, in a courtroom, the judge would say, well, you can, you make your decision based on just what you're gonna hear on these four walls. Uh, and and not bring in necessarily, I mean, every, they all realize we have lives outside, uh, these four walls. But if you could do that without bringing in tha- that information, then you're really able to be impartial. Uh, so, that, uh, you know, again, I ca- I can't give you a a a, an admonition and say, never do it. But, uh, I would say be very, very careful, keep good track of who you're talking to, when you talk to them, and what they said to you.
That's right.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Thank you, Bob.
You're more than welcome, yeah, it's 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 something that comes up all the time. And city attorneys, and I'm sure county councils are probably all, you know, uh, shaking their heads and say, don't do it, don't do it, don't, but but we know it's gonna take place.
That's right.
Uh, I have another question, Bob. Um, when, when would you disclose those ex parte communications? So, is this something when, uh, let's just say a permit or something actually lands out at the planning commission? And that's when you say it, or is it appropriate for me to say whatever meaning, even, you know, in the commissioners' comments area to say I have ex parte communications with so and so because I was helping them do this?
No, it would be appropriate when the matter comes before you because it needs to be part of the record.
Got it, okay, and then, and that would be just tracking, like you said, tracking the days that I talked to them and what it was about and and just kind of.
Yeah, who you who you spoke with.
Who I spoke to, what time, date, and what it was about.
Yeah.
Got it. Um, I think that's it for me, anyone else? Um, I think I'm gonna open up a comments, uh, section for the public. If there's anyone here in chambers that would like to comment on this topic?
And and again, if I, I apologize again for having lost the Zoom connection a couple of times.
No worries, no worries.
I I I assure, I assure you, I have paid my Zoom, uh, bill for the for the year.
It happens, it happens, um, I did see a hand raised here, um, Jack, yeah, if you can.
Can you come to the microphone, Jackie? Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, uh, good evening, um, planning commissioners. But I wanna get clearance from our city attorney if it's okay if I speak on this issue tonight as a city council member. Or should, I mean, full disclosure, I am a city council member, but I am also kind of wanting to speak as a citizen. So, can you please give me directions?
Yeah, you could, you you could speak, this is a matter on the agenda. Uh, and and you are on, yeah, as you just go to, i- 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 it's usually important for council members when they're speaking to 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 make sure that, uh, the public understands you you're speaking on in your individual capacity as a member of the city council.
Right, I'm not representing the body as a whole, I'm not making any decisions. I'm simply giving my my observation on this agenda item tonight. And just from the perspective, there is a lot more backstory to this. So, I hear the conversation going back and forth about, um, things that we probably know are pretty obvious. You know, try and remain, I was a planning commissioner, trying to remain open minded, careful of ex parte communications, um, talking to project, um, applicants, all of that, and recusing when a project is within your five hundred foot radius here in the town, amongst one of the, um, regulations that we abide by as planning commissioner. I think what I wanna do is be very direct about this one item, how it came to be. And I feel that, um, there was an individual, uh, that was trying to help out some business people in terms of the food truck ordinance. What that tells me as an individual is that perhaps the ordinance is not clearly written and is loosely interpreted, wrongly interpreted, misinterpreted, all of the above, which led to the situation of where we are tonight. And I feel that the individuals were trying to help, uh, the food truck owners, perhaps, you know, secure the ability to continue to conduct business. And why not? If this brings an added element of, uh, choices and more venues in our small little town and supports local small business food truck owners. I think that we're kind of going sideways with all this, and excuse me, Mr. Rathy, legalese and this issue and that issue, when really it just came from something truly to be community oriented and helpful. And I feel that the same recommendations need to go to our staff, how staff presents themselves to the public in 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 general, how staff presents themselves to prospective business permit seekers. We also need to be cognizant that our staff is in pure, um, uh, unadulterated, unbiased, level headed, calm engagement, um, because I think a lot of things went sideways on this situation. Thank you. We need to be, we need to do better.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. Um, anyone else in chambers? Since there's no comments in chambers, I'm gonna be opening that public comment on this topic via Zoom. Uh, if there's anyone that would like to, um,
Yes, we have Karavak and Fran Fitzharris, and Kara. Go ahead Kara.
Welcome. Kara, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to address the issue of site visits, and I did serve as a planning commissioner in a different city. Uh, we met twice a month, and we were actually encouraged to make site visits. There were a lot of additions, remodels, requests for variances. And I don't see, often it's just a drive by, but if, like, we're looking at plans, right? Somebody submits plans, you need to know the context within which, uh, this remodel or change is going to be made, you know, what's the impact on neighbors? Um, how does it affect the street view, all that kind of stuff? So, we were actually encouraged to make site visits. It doesn't mean you necessarily have to talk to the people. Once in a great while, um, that did happen. But I think you really need to know when you're being asked to approve plans, you know, what the neighborhood looks like and where it's going to be put. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Fran Fitzharris.
Okay, there we go. Hi, everyone, Frances Harris, three twenty-five. Um, so, um, you know, we, we have been a tasting room here in San Juan Batista for six years now. Um, when we first came, so, we're a type twenty-three, we're a beer manufacturer, so our production is four miles from here. We're allowed to have five tasting rooms, five satellite tasting rooms, and we chose San Juan Batista six years ago. And we're not troublemakers, we really have tried to help, uh, improve the process for everybody. We talked to a lot of businesses about ABC laws and about the process in getting your building permits and all those things. Um, and so, we tried to make a transition, it didn't work out for us, uh, because our our model right now thrives because of having the ability to do pop-ups and food trucks, and those are things that are being, um, attacked right now. And so, it was really concerning for us. Um, you know, we tried to move, it was an eight month process, we lost eight thousand dollars because it was really hard, because no one was really monitoring the projects at the time. And it's not that we're trying to point finger at anybody, but, um, there needs to be some kind of escalation point. And also, you know, maybe there's just too much going on, but there needs to be something that the businesses can do. Because a lot of times, for every one of me that speaks out, there are twenty that won't speak out because they're afraid. And we need someone to collaborate with us and to work with us, that's all, we're not trying to be troublemakers. And so, I just felt like, um, you know, we're getting some collaboration, and that's what we really need, because the reality is right now, the way that things are going, this is just not a good fit for Bury twenty-five, and it makes me sad. Um, and so, I I just really hope that we can improve our process, and it's not a personal thing, it's not. And it shouldn't be looked at that as a personal thing. This is about working together to make the process better, because it's just been one thing after another, so, thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Anyone else in Zoom land that might, eh, would like to make a comment? All right, so we'll move on to the next, um, topic. Again, uh, closing comments, Commissioner? Nothing, all right, then, yeah. We'll move on, um, I just wanna say, before moving on to the next topic, I did realize I made a mistake on section B under informational and discussion items. I forgot to actually open it up to public comments, um, in chambers. So, I'm just gonna go back for that, just to make sure that we're not forgetting anyone. Um, is there anyone here in chambers that would like to discuss anything about the city manager's report on, or on the strategic plan of City Gate? And, and if there's anyone that would like to make a comment on Zoom?
Fran, is your hand up still? For comment on this? On the strategic plan? Oh, there you go.
Oh, she took her hand down. Okay, so then I I will move on to, um, item C. Um, topics and schedule for planning commission workshops, um, staff.
Yeah, so this is a very, um, intentionally, uh, loose topic. Um, because there is, um, a very steep learning curve for, uh, the majority of you on the commission. Um, as you learned when you attended the academy, some of you, um, you're just at the tip of the iceberg, uh, so to speak. Um, when you hear, uh, Bob Rathy talk about, uh, the four levels of decision making that exist here in the city, um, it it's, uh, it can get mind boggling. And so, um, that just take you, uh, give you one example. Uh, we have something called a home occupation permit. It's a very easy permit to get, provided that you adhere to the administrative or ministerial requirements in the ordinance. Those things that are set out, that if you comply with all of those standards in the ordinance, then you get a pass. Um, and you get to move on and get your business license with no further review, um, except that you have a a permit number. So, that, that's a, an example of a ministerial decision that staff makes administratively. However, uh, also a part of the home occupation permit ordinance is a, uh, set of prohibited, uh, activities, things that people cannot do as part of a home occupation. And there are also a set of things that can be done, provided that you go to the planning commission and get a use permit. So, you can very easily, within the same ordinance, move through all of these decision making, um, checkpoints. Uh, and that's just one example. Um, there are several examples of things like that in the ordinance, and so, in in our regulations. And we're oftentimes, uh, focused on land use, but, uh, also understand that the general plan has m- many more elements, all of which, uh, come to play when we're making, uh, land use decisions, whether they be quasi judicial, or whether they be, um, administrative, ministerial, or whether you're making a recommendation, uh, in a legislative context, as Bob explained, zoning ordinances and general plan amendments, that kind of thing. So, um, my thought is that, um, it, and and there are other provisions, there are other regulations in the ordinance. For example, I didn't know, uh, that the floodplain ordinance has a development permit requirement that is discretionary. So, when people do certain things, uh, on the land, the city manager has the authority to issue a development permit, subject to certain conditions, and that immediately triggers an environmental review. Because, um, discretionary decisions are potentially subject to CEQA, if they're not otherwise exempt. So, there's a lot here, um, uh, there's a lot of touch points for the planning commission, depending on what you're looking at and what staff's doing with applicants out there. Um, and, um, uh, you know, we often hear about things way ahead of when anything gets, um, out there for public review or notice. And so, some of the things that we have set up are designed to give you, uh, sort of a clue regarding what's happening that we hear. Uh, informational items, for example, or, um, some things, we have a pre-application review that that is available to applicants, if they wanna get in front of you and talk about, you know, their pet idea. Uh, so, you know, there's a lot of things that the planning commission can get involved in. Um, and my thought is that we can, um, do a number of things. I would really like to get, uh, in front of the planning commission with a, um, sort of a, um, summary prepared by the Association for Environmental Professionals, for example, on the CEQA process. Um, I mean, I can put that together, but why reinvent the wheel? Um, and I think I sent you a link to, uh, the Off- Office of Planning and Research, so that there are, you understand that there are extra local resources that you can access without asking us. You know, you could just go get the information. Um, so, you know, you have these opportunities, and my thinking is that, well, number one, um, it's, it's useful to understand the lay of the land with respect to policies and regulations, but it's also important to understand where resources are, that will help you understand how things are supposed to work. So, earlier, uh, you talked about historic preservation, and, uh, you talked about the need to have, you know, a better understanding regarding how things get triggered, uh, with respect to permits and so forth. Um, I'd like to put that in context, and my context is there are other portions of the zoning ordinance, um, and the municipal code that bear on the same question. For example, when you look at this truck preservation ordinance, you see a link to other, uh, or a reference to other sections in the municipal code that require a particular permit. And those particular permit requirements may either be administrative, give us, staff gives us the opportunity to make decisions. It also requires us to kick it up, uh, stairs to the planning commission, uh, in certain circumstances. Um, and, um, you know, so it's important to understand that, and the mechanism is a site and design review permit, which has this in this completely separate section of the ordinance. So, I thought. So I thought would be good to kind of go through things in a deliberate way and talk with you about things that you find most interesting and start there. And then we can kind of branch out where, you know, where, you know, we all think it's appropriate. But I'd like to kind of start from, you know, sort of the basic foundation here with respect to our current general plan policies. You know, we heard Dawn talk about the, the strategic plan, getting into some of these issues with respect to the current general plan. It's important to understand what's in the plan. So I'm willing to take as much time as it takes to go through in a workshop setting with the commission general plan and look at the municipal code and how it's put together and the things that you're most likely to encounter as planning commissioners. And we can sort of do, you know, look at the side issues, you know, as we go along. So I kind of wanted to get an understanding from you regarding what you think you'd like to hear about. We're going to be getting into a discussion about community planning in the very next few months. Part of that process involves design. Well, it turns out we don't just have a general plan and a zoning ordinance, we also have design guidelines. And we have, you know, historic resources that are referenced, and we have other resources that you need to be aware of. So I would, I would like to sort of structure that, this, these workshops to maximum benefit. And so that, that's sort of my opening pitch, as you will, to get us started. And, and I, and I want to be, make sure that you understand that, that when we go, when I suggest that we go through things in a certain way, it's not based on my agenda. It's based on my belief that if you have better information, then you're going to make better decisions. And, and you're, you're going to be able to listen to people in the community and help them understand also how things are supposed to work and where the opportunities for change might be important. Because certainly, all of these things are dynamic. We've got regulations, we've got policies, and implementation measures. None of them are set in stone. They are all subject to change. So, and that's the complaint we, we, we hear from developers sometimes that, well, yes, you know, we can, we can rely and we, we, I think Dan and I had this discussion before he became a commissioner, you know, with respect to urban growth boundary. Well, I said, well, we'll put it in the general plan as a policy, and he's like, well, the general plan policies can be changed. And I, which is true. So there, there are things to recognize that not, not everything is black and white, set in stone. You know, when you hear us talk about code enforcement, we are in the moment. We're not in, we're not involved in what might happen or changes that might occur that might make things easier or better or, or more simple to accomplish. We're actually in the moment where we're dealing with a particular policy, a particular standard or a particular regulation that's explicit. So we're, I'm willing to enter into, to the, this dialogue where we can actually set up a process for change after you have really a good foundation for, for where to start. Okay, so with that, if you want me to come back to you with some suggestions for a workshop scenario, I can do that. But if you'd rather just kind of do sort of a shotgun and then I can make sense of that in, in a more structured way. So it's really up to you, however you want to proceed.
Commissioners, any comments?
Yeah, I think it'd be good if you can come back to us and, and give us a list of things that you think I might, you might want to recommend to us to start with. That'd be great. I'd appreciate that. And one of the things that, that always comes to the back of my mind, and you're probably doing some of this, but when you're, when you, when you let us know what's going on, or even the public for that matter, when you itemize a code or a rule or a guide or something like that, there's always an opportunity to put a link in your message that says, oh, when I'm talking about municipal code number 25, you have a link right there in the message, maybe, I don't know, on the agenda, whatever, so that we can access it and, and, and have a discussion on if we have to. I'd appreciate that.
Any, any other comments? You know, I just want to say, yeah, whatever workshops or whatever works, what you think is best, I don't mind taking a look and, and going with that flow, just because I, I trust that, you know, you know that stuff more than we do, so.
Well, I, I promise I'll make sure that you understand where, where it's coming from.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, it's not just going to be like, oh, here's my great idea.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, and I, I, I thank you for at least planning that. That, that seemed very, very, very helpful, and I appreciate all the efforts that will go into it.
And I too appreciate the overview at 30,000 feet. I do, however, I would be remiss if I did not bring up a particular San Juan Batista municipal code section that has caused a lot of consternation, as I think we're all aware lately. And I know, Brian, you and I have spoken about this with the chairman as well. It's San Juan Municipal Code Section 11-04-030. Specifically, the way in which the city has and is currently interpreting it, enforcing it, and the impact that said interpretation and enforcement has had upon existing businesses, some of which, all of which I think are very valuable to this community. In my own personal opinion, 11-04-030 has a lot to be desired against unclear at best. I think it's conflicted at worst. And I do, it also is also my opinion that it is not being, has not been uniformly interpreted and enforced, sometimes to the benefit of some businesses like brewery 25, who we just heard from Fran Fitzharris. She got a conditional use permit that allowed for food trucks specifically. And she's not a restaurant, and she doesn't have outdoor dining. And then it's been interpreted and enforced to the detriment of other businesses. So therefore, my question is, what opportunity, if any, will this body have to discuss 11-040? I mean, sorry, 11-04-030? Is that a deliberation or a discussion? Or a meeting in a workshop or otherwise that's appropriate for this body to undertake? Or is the administration thinking that this is something better taken up by the city council only within their exclusive purview and jurisdiction? What's the take on that? I think that, I, I don't want to be presumptuous, but I'm assuming that some of my fellow commissioners might share in the, the thought that it's worth looking at, an amendment to 030, clarification. But if the council's going to do that, then if the council can do that, I just think I would strongly urge the city to do something about this ordinance because the way, again, it has been interpreted and enforced has reached really a crescendo, I'll call it. And something needs to be done.
I can step in for that. I'm, I'm related to the planning commission workshops that is coming. I, I am holding those comments for the planning commissioner comments. And I, I, I plan to also address that for that next stage. So I'm just going to keep it to this, this topic in relate, in regards to the planning commission workshops, but, but that is coming.
Yeah, so there are a couple of ways to look at this, and not to cast any shadow, you know, what's it called? Throw any shade on that idea? But to, I think we're talking about two different things. One is a hot topic that, you know, where there's a conflict and misunderstanding and disagreement and, and surprise because of the, you know, what you're talking about with respect to the level of enforcement or the consistency thereof. So I, I think that we can do two things. We can put that as a study session item sort of thing on the planning commission agenda to look at specially. And then we can also do the workshop thing, which is, I think is, is a more sort of overview, general approach that you really need to have. I wouldn't want to not do the workshop thing that we really need to do in, or do, do the other 11-030, 04-030 instead of, you know, so I think we need to find a way to do both. And so that's what I would encourage is to keep this workshop idea alive to work through the ordinance. And you're going to come across things that are really, like, you really want to make a change here and along the way. And, but they're not hot topics, but, you know, I think that if there's a lot of angst, certainly, you know, provides an opportunity to take a new look at something that's more pressing. So let's do both, you know.
And, yeah, and I didn't mean to, I didn't intend to suggest otherwise. Hopefully, maybe I didn't say clearly, I commend the overview approach. I, I guess it was my way of saying, but let's not leave out, as long as we're talking about ordinances, let's talk about 11-04-030, because that's the one that's causing the most.
Right, we don't want to, we don't want to wait to get to that particular section in our overview in order to address a critical issue. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I agree.
Well, we can probably walk and shoot them at the same time. We can do both.
All right, so any other comments from our commissioners? And then I'm going to open it up to chambers. Anyone here in chambers that would like to make a comment? None? I would like to open it up to Zoom. Anyone in Zoom land regarding this topic would like to make a comment? Awesome. All right, so we are going to move on to item number six. I'm sorry.
By the way, I'll provide something for your next meeting.
Got it.
Some kind of a, an idea.
Got it. Thank you. So yeah, I'm going to be moving over to comments from the planning commission. I kind of want to start off first just here, just kind, kind of echo what Dan is saying, and I understand what staff is telling us, where we want to kind of look at this thing, ordinances as a whole and kind of make a workshop out of it. But as Dan has mentioned, there is an urgency regarding a, a certain ordinance here in town, and that's 11-04-030. And I would like to request from staff to suspend that ordinance. I want that to be an action item that goes to city council with an urgency to suspend that while the planning commissioner, commission looks into amending or revising that whole entire ordinance, just because it's been causing a lot of problems. On top of that, not only do we, I, I do, I want to suspend this ordinance, I'm looking to talk to my planning commissioners here now and request that we have a special meeting to approve that action item to make it to city council or whatever it needs to happen to, to rush that over to city council. I, I don't think we should wait. I think it's urgent. Our town is struggling with this. I've seen a lot of businesses, and I'm sure our other commissioners are hearing it, and I think it's just causing all the strain. So I think it, you know, respectfully, we, we need to start moving on this quickly. And so that's one of the things that I have. And again, I don't know any of the other commissioners would like to say or comment on that.
If I could just add, I think that's an excellent idea, Mr. Chairman, and Bob Raffey, if he's still there, I don't know. He's here. Is it Raffey or Rafey, by the way?
Raffey.
Raffey? I didn't want to mispronounce it. Everyone always mispronounces my name. There he is. Bobby, you just heard the chairman, I think, suggests a suspension of 11-04-030. But from a city attorney's perspective, is that more efficacious or, or perhaps would there be a consideration of just a stay of enforcement of 11-04-030?
The, the planning commission essentially
Would do either one.
Either on its own, regardless of what's all saying.
No, I understand, but, but if, if the, if the planning commission were to make a recommendation to the city council, what would be more palatable, a suspension of an ordinance or a stay of enforcement of an ordinance? It seems like a stay of enforcement is lower hanging fruit more easily accomplished.
Yeah, it would, of course, be, be up to the council. The council might want to also consider, you know, what precedent might be set by that. The ordinance, as far as I know, has been on the books since 2007. So it isn't like this was a recently enacted section of the municipal code, so the findings for some sort of urgent action would probably be a little bit difficult to make. But yeah, it would be, it would be, you know, in, in view of whatever the planning commission felt was the right recommendation to make to the city council.
Is a recommendation such as that an action item that would have to be agendized differently than this? In the way it's come up tonight?
Yes, it would, it should be specifically agendized, I would think, yeah. So, so that both, so that everybody would know that that's the topic on the commission's agenda. Always good to be specific.
Any other comments from commissioners here?
I just chime in to echo the same thing. I think this is something that is really causing a lot of tension and friction in this town. I think everybody knows it, and we should do whatever we can as quickly as we can. And if we have to hold a special meeting to get this thing rolling along, let's do it.
I agreed.
And just to echo Commissioner Korea's comment right now, Bob, if it does have to be agendized as an action item, a recommendation to the council, that is, how, how much, if we, and if everyone's agreeable to a special meeting for that specific purpose, what type of notice, noticing is, is involved in order to get that special meeting on calendar to get this done as quickly as possible?
24 hours.
Okay, cool. So, so Bob, just to be clear, the commission would, would they need to do anything, direct staff, or to do, do something with respect to setting a special meeting? What, what would the action, what, what sort of things necessary this evening to get it, put it in motion? In other words, we hear definitely that, you know, the commissioners would like to, you know, get the process started to do something about the ordinance, or whatever that might be. And then that, that requires that there be an agenda that with that on it. So we can have a special meeting within a 24-hour notice. But we also need to have the commission suggest to staff that this item be put on that agenda. Is that an action this evening? I, I don't, I don't want this two-step process, in other words, where, you know, they have to have a meeting with the necessary, I mean, it's, it's just, it's like a Russian.
I think it's always, I think it's always appropriate for the commission to give direction to staff to, in, in this case, to consider setting a special meeting on a, on a, on a date. Wouldn't necessarily have to be a date certain, but tonight, but I think it's always appropriate for the commission to give direction to staff in that sense.
Okay.
It's not an action. You're not taking action on it. You're only just giving direction.
We're just directing staff to have a special meeting with this item on agenda.
Yeah, and, and that would probably be, staff's job would be like we do for all our special meetings and, you know, have to find a date that was, you know, when, when a quorum could be assembled.
Right. Okay, good enough.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments from our commissioners? All right, okay, sorry, I have a few weird, you know, I got a little to-do list here of important things for this town. Another thing that I would like our staff, or what, that I'm going to request, and it's kind of a, a big one here. I, I do want to request a report for all of our ordinances and its legislative intent. I just, I, I want to do it in order to ensure that all our ordinances make sense with our current times and to ensure they align with the values and needs of the people of San Juan. And so it's going to be a big undertaking, but I do. Um, and so it's gonna be a big undertaking, but I do request that from staff um to give us a report of those ordinances. And again, with that legislative intent, so that the commissioners can review that and understand what these ordinances are about and whether they need to be revisited. Such as um ordinance eleven dash zero four dash zero three zero.
Uh, there are hundreds. Um, and, and. Yeah, well, the thing is that, okay, we've got the initial ordinance, right? And then there are subsequent amendments that, you know, get codified. Um, and so every ordinance has a legislative history that sort of summarizes, you know, all those amendments that occurred. Um, and what, we're doing a budget uh this in July and we, we will. We have the opportunity to add five staff, I think, for this purpose. I'm just, I'm being facetious.
Well, I, I, I can just reflect if I can interrupt for a minute.
Yeah, go for it.
Ordinances establish our municipal code, so uh we had this experience in the city of Salinas, uh Liz and I. Where uh Mr. Callahan, the city attorney, went through chapter by chapter and brought a chapter to the council every month. And said, here's the way I recommend this ordinance be written, and he rewrote the whole municipal code. And it took he and his, a city attorney staff of three or four attorneys, maybe six months to accomplish the whole task.
And he, he.
So I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not putting that out there as an excuse, I've seen it done, it needs to be done, this is also a hundred years old. And these little, these little spiders are hiding in these dark corners and. They're out of business, you know?
Yes, we, I just wanna come up with a game plan where we were like such as what you're saying.
And to, just planning commission would look at the zoning code, would look at the general plan, you don't need to look at um, um. Uh, the city manager's roles and duties, you don't need to look at, you know.
Yeah, no, just the ordinances, zoning and.
Apply to the.
Yeah, that apply and, and perhaps, you know, maybe we make it an every year thing, you know, where, you know, so we, we're not. Out of time or we're running into these issues such as, you know, ordinance eleven dash zero.
Well, we have, we have uh, I, I outlined sort of a, a, a process where we're gonna go through regulations. And maybe what Dawn is describing um with respect to that level of, you know, sort of working over things, isn't. I mean, yeah, we do need to uh, you, we heard during the planning commissioners academy, one city that. Uh, was up in the da- desk, was talking about how they every year go through and evaluate the adequacy. Or the relevance of their, of their zoning code. Um, and they may do, they, they may do it for the, the entire ordinance, but um, you know, they, they do it. Um, you know, in a deliberate way. And so my thought is that as we go through these workshops, that might be an opportunity for us to look at each section and say, okay, well, here's what it says. Here's what it means, here's why it, here's why it exists and what do you think? Um, based on your uh experience uh as a, a person out there in the world. And also uh your experience here in the community as a commissioner, so. You, you know, I think, I would have put it in the context of these workshops as a way of kinda getting to, you know, what you're asking for. And, and I, and I'm, I'm sorry, I made a joke about hiring five extra staff, but um, cause I do think it's important.
Yeah, no, I, I honestly think it's, it's something that's needed for this town, I'm not sure if it's been done. Um, so again, it's just me, you know, looking at, you know, you know, our residents and our, our businesses and. Making sure that these ordinances aren't causing more harm, you know.
What you're describing is a common principle in any business or public administration, it's the fallacy of incrementalism. I understood the two thousand and seven law was created because someone we all know, her husband, who's no longer with us, was selling hot dogs at the mission. And so it was a big deal in two thousand and seven. That's, that's what our code enforcement officer told me, he said, I know where this law came from and I know the individual. That caused the council to change the law incrementally, and that's the kind of the whole point, to make these little incremental decisions over. Ah, years now. Oh, it's interesting, the history and the intent.
Now it makes a little more sense.
Sell hot dogs at the mission, that's what the intent of the laws.
Got it. Well, again, so going back to this purpose, I think it's very important that we.
I just wanna interject here too, uh some items that we might come across might wanna go to committee to as well. So uh de- depends on who we wanna get involved. So there's always an opportunity for a haddock or, or uh, what do you call it?
That's a very good point.
But however way you wanna do it, Brian, um, you know, I, I, I don't care, I just, I wanna make sure that we don't lose sight of this. And that this is a, an important topic and something that we, we take care of, I, I think it's, it is necessary.
You're, it's on the record.
Cool. Um, any other uh comments from our commissioners regarding this?
I just wish the hot dog seller would have paid ten percent to the diocese of Monterey, then that whole problem could have been avoided.
Got it, and then um as I continue down my list, I have another comment, I am, I apologize again. Um, I would like to also request a report on an interim third street solution. Um, when it comes to, uh, you know, after we remove um parklets. Um, I know we have, you know, a lot of turmoil with our businesses here in San Juan. And I just wanna make sure that maybe we come to terms or meet in the middle, and so perhaps we can come up with a. Solution or something, or a report on what's recommended from staff, once these parklets are removed to, to help these guys out. Um, so that's uh any comments from our commissioners?
Well, on, on that last point, it seems like it's a different way of asking, when is the third street master plan project? Is that part of the budgeting process?
Uh, no, uh, no, no commissioner.
So do you need?
It, it's been budgeted, it's been budgeted.
What do they call that in, in Washington, allocated or no?
Funds have been appropriated.
Appropriated, that's right.
Um, but um, as a result of our active transportation plan commissioners, um. We caught wind of a uh grant opportunity uh with Caltrans, a three hundred thousand dollar grant was submitted. I'm gonna say two months ago, and we hope to hear back from them about creating a multimodal center um on the island meeting near the soccer station. And that would be like an anchor for the third street master plan. But, yeah, we do need to get an RFP written and we do need to get it out and find a consultant and start working on the third street master plan. I spoke about that with Brian then this week already, so it's been on the books too long, we need to move it forward.
Well, I think that's especially true considering the chair's comments, which is just echoing a lot of folks on Third Street saying, if we're holding that out. I know it's, you know, January one, but that'll be here before you know it.
It needs to start before January one.
Yeah, and, and I think that'll give some of these folks who like Anaka, let's just use Anaka for example, they're gonna. January one, they're gonna lose their parklet, but we could tell them. According, we, we got this new plan that's being developed, so hold out hope for that, you know, it gives, it gives people cause for hope.
I appreciate and understand that, and so when I heard that date at that council meeting, I knew we had to act well before January first.
And it sounds like you are, good job.
Well, we're doing our, thank you.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, uh, how about uh, you know, how are all of our projects doing, developments and what have you? There, I'm sure there are other things that are in the works right now, like the brewery, like the De Ambrosio. Development that's going up uh, up there by on Third Street. Where are we with that, as far as that goes? Um, I know we used to have a.
Yeah.
Status report, and we kinda got rid of that.
Yeah, I think that.
Reason for that.
Yeah, I think, I think the, that maybe there was a lot going on at that point, but you know, really. You've got one development permit application scheduled for HRB and planning commission review. Uh, well, actually you have two um that you heard about this evening. Um, but these are uh two, two projects, uh they're few and far between. And so you kinda hear about it, we don't need to create a new, a list in order for you to hear about them. But I, you know, there is a community development uh status report that's produced, goes to city council. Um, every month, that's a good source of information regarding what our program and, and the community development program involves. Code enforcement involves what we call current planning, which is these development permits, historic resources review. It, it involves um uh how, the housing element, um and there's the community plan. Um, and now we're gonna be doing third street master plan, uh there's gonna be some transportation planning, hopefully. Um, and so there, there's a, there, the program is, community program here is pretty large. Um, and uh there's, there is a lot going on, but there, it's not project oriented.
So, so uh commissioner, a lot of your questions, um, for example, we issued a building permitted Casa Rosa, are they still building? Yes, well, uh, we don't know when they'll be done, you know, if they get an inspection every six months, it could just keep going. And so we don't have an answer, um, we can see people working inside Neil's Market, I drive by there every day. Um, we don't know what they're building in there, they have a building permit, but that's really all they have, they're gonna be a market of some kind.
Pile of sand out in front now, I wonder what that's for.
I was gonna piggyback off that and ask what's the status on Neil's Market.
And, and then, and then the uh, the, the vacant lot next to the wastewater treatment plant, um, we hear from them once a year when they have to cut their weeds. Um, since I've been here, that's all we've heard from them. So they, we ask them to cut their weeds and they do, so that's all I hear from them.
Be a responsibility for the code enforcer? Well, the fire department, some of these uh outstanding things that should be happening, it's not happening, I don't know.
Well, no, just because they have approvals, no, well, projects that get approved and entitles to what, forty-five? Townhomes or single-family homes on that piece of property, they could sit forever, they could sit for a very long time. I've, I've seen a, a gosh, uh, one property owner showed me a parcel map from nineteen oh seven and asked me if it was still valid. So, you know, this stuff, it's, they're not required. In fact, sometimes they get it entitled so they can sell it for more money, and maybe they just can't sell the property. But there's a number of reasons, so, so I think the status report should simply add these properties and let you guys know, we don't know. Uh, or, or not, that's.
Well, so talking about status reports, is there like a spreadsheet or something where, you know, the commission can have? Or does city council have one where it talks about these projects and where they're at, maybe yeah, they're just still, you know, the permit issued.
Like, like Todd used to do, remember that?
Maybe.
I do, I do remember that.
We have a board or something we can track.
There is not currently, it could be, it could be reconsidered.
Yeah, would we be able to request something like that? Sorry, we're gonna have a lot of requests today.
You just did.
All right, cool, yeah, so I'm gonna formally request as an Excel sheet.
I wanna take a stab at adding, adding on to this, I don't know if it has to be a formal. Full, Dawn, I don't know if it has to be a formal fold-out spreadsheet like Todd used to do, that seemed kinda cumbersome and overly. Well, it's, it seemed like it was, yeah, overall, it's, but more, more importantly, I think, it seems like it took an inordinate amount of time to put together. And I don't think really, this is one commissioner's opinion, I don't need to know all that stuff. I, on the other hand, I'd like to know generally what's going on in town, you guys are the eyes and ears of this town. If a developer comes in or someone has an idea to do something, they're gonna come check with you first, and we may not even hear about it. And I think what we're expressing collectively is that. We would prefer not to have the first time we hear about a project be when the application is turned in, if this guy's been coming in and out or gal. Um, for months or a year with ideas and proposals and so forth, like for example, Mr. Fulton's annexation. Request, I think he was on earlier tonight, I don't know if he still is, and I don't mean to, you know, be taking something that's not on the agenda. But that is something that we'd like to know about, if there are other things like that, what else is going on, is there anything going on in the north end of town? Any ideas, any proposals, where are they, when are, when might they apply? Just to general kinda put our finger on the pulse of the community and what you all are privy to. Would be nice, and it doesn't have to be a fold-out with lots of colors.
You know, for me, it's just a spreadsheet that says, hey, the Neil's Market um got the permits they're constructing.
I'm al- I'm always thinking that you could attach it to something else that you're already doing.
Or maybe on the website.
You know, that could be a sub of something that says, you know, like if you got a code enforcement report, hey.
I think we get it, I think, I think we get it.
Well, Brian, Brian, there is, there's a, okay, so on the uh seventh of every month. We request status reports from all of our departments. Um, and that's the status report that Brian's referring to, and there's a portal for status reports on the city's website. And, and I'm not suggesting you go and dig it out. Um, but Veronica is asking the first of every month to get your status reports in right now from code enforcement from the building official. We're making better use of our planning software, our, our iWorks system, and it can generate reports on properties and, and. And so we put on the web by the seventh of every month, a list of all the current building permits, honestly, they're mostly solar panels. And, and, and swimming pools or the like, but uh roofs, but um they're there and, and I'm happy to share them with you. And what we can do in the first thing in the morning is give you a direct link to that portal. Uh, so that'll at least get you started, because the council's been asking for status reports from every department. Um, and I, and I write one every month for the city council agenda in the form of a ten PowerPoint slides. And I make sure that that gets posted on, on this portal, this uh, this status portal on our website. So uh, we want you to take advantage of that, um, cause the information's there. But not specifically related to this body and not specifically related to land use necessarily. As Brian said, his own status report is several pages and maybe only a paragraph is current planning, so. So, um, I'm, so some of this is already there, maybe we need to repackage it better. Um, if you read my article in Mission Village, voice communication is supposed to be the, the new thing we're focused on, one of the council's top priorities. So I just need you, time to stop hiding in my office and get out and communicate, so.
Yeah.
All right, thanks for listening to.
And then um I have another, I'm on my list, sorry guys, I'll keep it short here, we're almost there. Uh, I would like to request for a report on trash storage around Fourth Street, um, staff and I heard, heard there's a problem. Barbecue, so I wanna make sure that gets, yeah, smoke point, I just wanted that area with the trash situation. I'd just like to get a report on that and figure out how we can help. Well, there's still an issue there.
Yeah, I think understanding the problem is the first step, and then we can get to solutions.
Solution, yeah. Yeah, who owns them, what, what is all, yeah. Perfect, and then the other one, the um would be a request, um. I don't know if it's really a request or how it can be done, but I know we s- recently started enforcing a lot of ordinances in town. And I feel from just talking and walking with the community and hearing from other community members. That they don't really know that all of a sudden we're starting to enforce them and what they are, so is there like a. A, a thing that can go out with the mail letter, you know, the bill, the water bill. Um, that talks about, hey, the, you know, you can't park six inches here and you can't do this and, you know, food trucks that and. Just the, yeah, this may be the most common ones and, and let them know that those are being enforced, just, that's just, you know, for me walking the town and. And getting, hearing from our constituents of, of these issues, but again, that's just a, a request or a report, I don't know what you wanna call it.
So um, one of the things that has happened, um, and, and we need to dial it back. Is uh when we recruited for private, uh new private security company a year ago. Um, we were directed to add enforcement of parking and enforcement of administrative citations. And so uh the city's uh new private, new, year-old private security company uh is writing maybe. Four times more parking citations than we did a year ago. They're much more effective than thirty hours a week of code enforcement who has twenty other things to do. And so maybe our parking enforcement is too effective.
Do we get, do we get the money on that, John? I know that was an issue in the past.
We do, and for the budget, I, I ran, ran the uh, the, the numbers, so I have it going back to twenty nineteen. And I think we got one parking ticket in twenty nineteen and everyone was happy.
Got it.
So uh, we need to uh, I, I, per the request of a council member, I've tried to taper back on, on Kismet's enforcement of parking. Give people a break and save it more for the red zones and the handicap zones and the health and safety issues, uh and, and use warnings more than citations.
Got it, and I, I just wanna, you know, I just wanna make sure that like, you know, a good example would be um. You know, hey, letting the, the business owners on Third Street know, and, and the reason behind that, like especially the parking stuff. It's just that they have customers that are parking in front of their, their buildings and they're visiting their, their establishments. And then all of a sudden, you know, they shop, they, they spend some money here in town, which is great. But then all of a sudden they come outside and boom, you're hit with a parking ticket and because they weren't parked a certain way or something. And so maybe those business owners couldn't, you know, let their customers know, hey, be careful. Um, so that they're not having a bad experience and so that we're welcoming these people back into our town. Um, you know, and I get it, you know, parking needs to, you know, we do need to enforce the laws and ordinances here. But, you know, I just wanna, you know, you know, just take it easy on, on that perspective.
And as, as I mentioned in, in my uh, sorry, Brian. It's becoming that, it's not, no longer a planning commission meeting, if you ask me. Um, um, you can't have a, a, a parking structure of any kind without enforcement, it's a, it's a third stool, right? You have paid parking, you have street parking, on-street parking, off-street parking, and you have to have enforcement, so you can't. If you're ever gonna move towards a formal parking district downtown, that's a critical component. Um, and um, and I forgot what else I was gonna say and I'm getting tired.
Okay, no worries, and then I think uh that's pretty much it for me, I got one last.
I just wanted to mention one thing about code enforcement, because it's not just parking, it's a bunch of other stuff happening too with respect. I just wanted to mention one thing about code enforcement, because it's not just parking, it's a bunch of other stuff happening too with respect to code enforcement. So when we have the opportunity, for example, we received a lot of complaints about signs that weren't compliant with sign ordinance. And especially in on Third Street. And so instead of issuing a bunch of compliance orders and instead of citing people, which we. But first of all, we don't just cite people for for these violations, we talk to them first. And then we issue a piece of paper called a compliance order, and then if there's not compliance, then. There's a citation, there's always an opportunity to resolve those citations. Through compliance, so it's an extended process. It involves first the information, conversation, then the formal notice, then the citation. So we don't just cite people, that is misconception. The other thing for those kinds of things, so when we had the sign ordinance complaint. I sent a memo to all the businesses in downtown. That here are the sign regulations and here are the signs that are prohibited. And after that, only after that, did we begin to have conversations with people about. Signs that were prohibited and our favorite A-frame signs, for example, were part of that list, so. People got a conversation about A-frame signs, which is ongoing. And we're still having these conversations and I don't think anybody's been cited. But we're still talking to people about, here's what the sign ordinance says. And eventually, yes, it means that we get, you heard this during the academy. It, if you keep getting this kind of conflict, it means the ordinance has to change. So that's another thing's going to be on the list.
Perfect, yeah. Well, thank you. And then actually, this is just, I'm just terrible. That now that you're talking about A, A-frame signs, another thing I would like to pull or pull a reporter request is to look at the sign ordered. For this town, just because that's another hot topic and and, you know, I think it should, it should be looked at. And this is the end of it, guys, I swear, and I'll open up to the floor and and our commissioners. The last few things are not requests, they're just me making an announcement. I did want to let the San Juan know that, you know, I'm following up on a. Customer service training from City Gate that's going to hit all of us, planning commission, city council, public works, city staff. The whole entire, you know, org here on trying to work on being more friendlier. Being approachable and working on our customer service skills, I know I can be better at it and I know everyone else can. And so I just want to let the public know that that is coming and and I believe our staff is working on it and I think it's coming in June if I'm. I'm right.
That's part of the June, June third workshop.
Workshop, cool, so that is coming, so that's great news. Second, I just want to thank Brian Rich Public Works. By our fire department or sheriff and recology. For being on site and throwing on a great rib cookoff festival this weekend, which I truly enjoyed with friends and family. And I'm, I'm, I saw a lot of our staff members walking, which made me really happy to see that we were showing face. And so I just want to throw out that appreciation for that hard work and thank you for doing it over the weekend. You know, taking time away from family and and your personal time just to support that, so. That's all I had, commissioners, any other comments regarding any of all this? I apologize for taking up so much time.
Yeah, thank you for the secret training, that was great.
Nope, no comments. All right, so I guess I'm going to open this up to chambers, is there anyone here that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to open the floor to Zoom land, is there anyone in Zoom that would like to make a comment?
So go ahead, Marlene.
Welcome, Marlene.
There we go.
Hi, Marlene.
Is your.
Marlene, can you hear us?
She, her mic maybe off, yeah.
Maybe she's using a different mic or something, yeah.
So we'll go to, to, while she's getting that squared away, go to Fran. Go ahead, Fran.
Okay, thank you, everyone, Franbury twenty five. Thank you so much, I love hearing all the dialogue that's been going on the last few minutes here. So I want to mention that for hospitality, for the hospitality businesses, we are, are absolutely accustomed to following laws. And process, you know, between the health department, our alcohol license, labor laws. Like, that's not a thing that we don't want to do, we have to, otherwise we lose our business, so we just want to be educated. Whenever an ordinance is coming out that hasn't really been enforced very long. And and yes, we need to educate our customers as well about that. And then thank you on the comment about the third street plan, because really, you know, come January. It's going to be like, I'm sorry to be silly, but it's like Linus when the great pumpkin didn't show up. And our parklets go away, like what's next for us? So we really need to talk about an option, you know, and it could be anything, like even for retail, we have sidewalk sales. We let outdoor dining for Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays, there has to be something that we need to do for our business community, absolutely. And as far as the ordinances go, I'd love to see it kind of broken down between ordinance. And and code enforcement for neighbor, neighborhoods, communities, the ordinance and code enforcement for businesses. You know, ordinance and code enforcement for industry businesses and just break it down so that way we can really. You know, chew on it and understand it a little bit better, but right now it really is, is a struggle for the, the local businesses. And we just want to be educated, we want to understand it and we'll enforce it. So thank you so much for all the positive dialogue tonight, thank you.
Thank you. And then I guess we'll go back to Marlene. Hopefully we resolve the mic situation. Marlene, can you hear us? We don't have the chat option for these people, right, where they could like type what they wanted to say. All right. Marlene, we'll, we'll give you another few seconds here to see if you can figure it out. Not sure if you need to switch your mic, oh, she dropped. Maybe she's coming back?
She might have frozen, yeah.
All right, I'm just going to give her a minute and if not, then we'll, we'll close it out. Anyone else on Zoom that would like to make a public comment? I don't see her coming back. All right, so then any closing remarks then from our planning commissioners tonight? All right, so then, sorry, I need to pull up my agenda, guys. All right, so moving on to section six B, community development. Did we do that already, I'm sorry? We did? All right, then I'm just going to go for an adjournment. And Clark, can I get a roll call?
Commissioner Korea?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBries? Commissioner Maderos?
Yes.
Commissioner Newkirk Smith? Chair Aranda?
Yes. It is nine fourteen P M, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Oh, and I wanted to say the next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June sixth, twenty twenty three.